Okay. Commissioners, the last item is item number 11, Application for Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of the Bronx. This is 4680 Fieldston Road in the Fieldston Historic District, docket number 096026. A Tudor Revival style house designed by Mann and McNeil and built in 1917-1918. Application is to construct three additional houses on the lot.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Lisa Schenker, Preservation Staff. 4680 Fieldston Road is this site over here. There is currently an existing building on it. And the proposal that you're looking at today is to construct two more houses on that site, and then an adjacent site which is currently vacant to construct a new house on that side as well. And the application will be rejected.
So this is the one that we were just talking about. This is the house that is there. Here. This is this house.
Good afternoon Commissioners, this is Stephen Burns from BKSK Architects. The, thank you Lisa for showing briefly the site plan. Let me just see if I can point here. So, in Fieldston, there's a primary street called Fieldston Road which goes along here. And there is also, shown right here, actually in the bed of a street, but the street is not, does not exist, a small pond called Indian Pond. That is a shared park that is part of the Fieldston community. One of the privileges of living in Fieldston is to have that pond there. So, there are a number of houses that are built around the pond now. There's a house here, there's a house here, there's actually an empty lot fronting on the pond there, and there's another house here. This is an existing house, so-called Bloomfield House. And then there's another house there. So there's a pattern of houses along there. So there's this empty lot on the pond, and then there's an ex, the existing Bloomfield House occupies a lot that exists like this. The existing house is very much to the side of the property, leaving a large swath to the south of it. And then, as Lisa had said, this is another piece of property that is a separate lot, has always been a separate lot, and which was acquired by the Bloomfields around 1950. The family's owned it since after the war. So they own all of this land. What's interesting and sort of exceptional is that to the south of the property is what I would say is the largest house in all of Fieldston. It's currently an ambassadorial, or a council residence for a country from Africa. The facade is, I have never measured it, but it's maybe 200 feet long, or in excess of 200 feet long. So that is really kind of an unusual exception to the pattern of development which is more kind of like what you see along here. Also across Fieldston Road, other houses, a house here, a house here, a house there. So there is this mix of houses on varying sites of property, sizes of property. One thing we're going to be talking about is the relationship of what is house number one? This is house number one, then there's house number two, and that's house number three. The relationship of house number one to the pond. When this project was started quite a few years ago, and it was presented before the Community Board like maybe four years ago, and at that time, if you see the property here, it has a curving flag type of situation, a long skinny section that what could, one could only have imagined when it was platted back in 1918, would have been access from this street, Livingston Road, to that lot. It's just this little finger of property, it's about 20 feet wide, that went there. So when we initially designed this, we actually said, well, that clearly was used, was there to be used as a driveway. So we made, put in a driveway here to serve this house. There is currently, this existing house, a driveway that goes past the house, and there's a turnaround here, a cul-de-sac, that's a private cul-de-sac. And when it was presented before the Community Board four years ago, they were concerned about a number of things. They were concerned about that driveway that was, you know, adjacent to the pond, it actually would, enabling that driveway to be used make it more difficult for people to park at the pond. It required the removal of a bunch of trees that were there. There was also concern about the position of the house relative to a rock formation. The house, existing house, is quite, on a piece of property that's more level here, and then it slopes up as it goes to the south. And there's a pretty prominent rock feature, rock outcropping, not far from the pond, very overgrown now, but if you remove the ivy, you would see a beautiful rock formation. And at that time, the house was kind of skirting the edge of that rock. They were concerned about that, and they were also concerned about any potential runoff from any of these houses toward the pond. So in the ensuing years, what was really important, we dealt with all three of those issues. We removed the driveway here, we set the house back 15 feet so that the house itself does not touch the rock in any way. And by the way, you know, we have to jump through a lot of hoops with a special natural area district, it's called a SNAD. And I think some people think that the SNAD, that the SNADs in the Bronx, and there's some SNADs in Staten Island, that the SNAD means that you may not touch the rock, or you may not touch a steep slope, and you should almost cut down no trees whatsoever. But that is not the case. What the SNAD says is that you must minimize any incursions onto rock, you must minimize incursions onto steep slope or steep slope buffer, and really minimize the number of trees that are to be cut down.
Steve, can I just ask you a question? You talked about the access from, I believe Livingston, and you said that when it was platted, I don't know, I guess in the early part of the 20th century, I believe, right? That it was intended to give access to the home. Was that large lot that you've shown, was that separate lots at that time?
No, no.
So it was always one lot, but...
Yes, it was always one lot.
But it also, that lot had frontage along Fieldston?
Fieldston Road and at Livingston Avenue in the back.
Okay.
And there are definitely, some lots are oversized in River, in Fieldston.
Right.
And I will show that there have been instances where those oversized lots have been subdivided.
Okay.
And are part of the history of development of Fieldston. Of course, there are other, many instances where there were separate lots that were developed later on.
Okay.
And there are, I don't know, there are 20 other empty lots in Fieldston, including one right across this pond here, that presumably one day might be developed.
All right, but you also said that the home that's adjacent to it, just, I don't know, this is south, but yes, this one was an anomaly because it's a very large home.
Yes.
And you're talking about a large home in terms of the square footage of the home, or the size of the lot?
Both.
Okay, because I see other lots that are fairly large elsewhere, but you didn't, I didn't.
Yeah. And what's interesting, for instance, if you look at that lot, the way it's, it's such a big house, that even though it's on a big piece of property, it would be almost impossible to put another lot there because it sits smack dab in the middle of that lot.
Okay.
In this instance, the existing house is way off to one side, leaving a big swath in, to the south. And this, one other thing that this map shows is just the distances of the houses from the pond. They are, the existing houses that are there are 102 feet from the pond, 71 feet from the pond, 58 feet from the pond, 80 feet from the pond. And we are proposing 133 feet away from the pond. So we are much further away from the pond than all of the other houses fronting on the pond. And we also shifted during the process of this redesign, you know, a number of years ago, shifted the house back 15 feet so that it doesn't touch the rock at all. The only piece that touches the rock is the front walkway that goes down to the driveway. But again, it just sort of skims the edge of it. The other thing that we wanted to show in this, because important sort of threshold issue for the Commissioners is not only the design of the houses, but the number of houses and the density of the houses. The density is a big issue here. So what we did was we studied all of the houses on this particular block. And what we, what we found was that the density of the, of this block, in terms of coverage, is 17.36 percent, including the embassy. So in other words, this is really, if we even include this, what's really skews the number, the coverage is 17.36 percent. If you actually took the, this out because it's really an anomaly, then the coverage of that lot is 18 percent, 18.14 percent. And what we are proposing is 16.61 percent. So what we are proposing is actually less in terms of density than what is already there. In terms of the...
And is that, I'm sorry, is that the average of all four homes?
No, yes, yes. If you took the four homes on the acreage that it exists now.
Okay.
So we're trying to show that this conforms within a density that prevails in the neighborhood. In terms of the floor areas, I mean, some people are saying, oh, are these McMansions? Are these just so grossly overscaled? No, they are not. The smallest house is 3,600 square feet, and the largest house is 4,900 square feet. So while for many people, those houses would sound like they're very big houses, 3,600, 4,900, in fact, in Fieldston, they are probably the mean, or even slightly under the mean. So I would argue that these houses are neither oversized, nor is the density overly much. Okay, so now how do I switch? Do I use this same button? Okay. So, in terms of looking at the issues that we had to deal with in SNAD, so what we did was, we eliminated this driveway. So this driveway used to go into this house here. And, and so what we decided to do was to, to take the existing curb cuts, so we were not changing the way it meets the street or any street trees in any way, and to bring the driveway back to the cul-de-sac, this is the front door, into the existing house, and then to make it a shared driveway. And I will show you later that this idea of a shared driveway is seen, you know, quite a number of times in Fieldston. And the reason we're doing that is to minimize the amount of trees that have to be removed. And if you look at this document here, you can see the trees are all colored in all around here. There are 81 trees on the property now, and we are removing 20, proposing to remove, I think it's 25 trees. 25 trees. And of the 25 trees that are to be removed, five of them are what I would call larger trees, 24-inch trees. But if you look in, in Fieldston, again, every house that was built in Fieldston required removing trees. And what I would argue is that we have minimized the amount of removal of trees. You can see here, this is the area of disturbance around the houses. So basically, all of the trees everywhere else have been remaining as is.
Can I just ask a quick question about that?
Yeah.
Do you have a map or a drawing that indicates how many other cul-de-sacs there are in this area? In other words, cul-de-sac seems to me the thing that's unusual.
I'll show you shared driveways. I mean, I don't, if it has a circle, I can't say that it's a circle, but I will show you, you know, a sheet of other drawings. And by the way, I think this, this handout in your set was, is the one that's not in the spiral. If you look in your leaflet, it's the loosely attached sheet. And I just, we sort of did that, I wanted to make it really clear where the existing trees are. And when I show you the rendering, for instance, of house number one, we digitally removed a lot of trees because there are so many trees that you really cannot see the architecture clearly. But if you, if you look, you'll see there are quite a few trees in front of here. And this is the pattern that you see in Fieldston. You see lots of trees all around the houses, all around the perimeter of the property, the trees are remaining intact. Of course, we're planting new trees, white pines between the houses to give more, you know, evergreen separation between them, and some other trees here and there. If you look at the topography here, you can see there's not very many topographical lines here. So you can see that that's where it's flatter, and you can see the grade going up here. So what we found is, almost a year was spent doing a civil engineering study of the property. And what they found was that there was actually, in the existing configuration, a fair amount of runoff from the existing driveway and cul-de-sac that just sort of dribbled down, here's the pond here. What we're doing, what we're proposing to do is to put in drainage for the site, as well as, of course, drainage for the hard surfaces, so that when this is built, there will be less runoff than it is now. So we're actually improving the drainage situation because none of this, this will all be captured and released, you know, in a delayed basis into the sewer system. So this, again, is a rock formation. We moved the house down 15 feet. This is the house facing Fieldston Road, and then this is the house on Indian, what's called Indian Road. And you'll see that, actually on the next sheet, let me do the next sheet here. So this is sort of the difficulty in dealing with construction in Fieldston. And whether it's one house, or two houses, or three houses...
But, but Steve, and I don't want to sort of interrupt your flow...
Sure.
But I think in just in terms of sort of a threshold issue for the Commission is that, that we know that the Historic District has a variety of lot sizes and a variety of homes. I think maybe you want to speak to the fact that it's appropriate to think about this site as a site which should be occupied by multiple buildings to begin with. Unlike the other lot which is at the intersection, that was a historic lot and was intended to be developed at some point. This was a lot that was for one, at least originally for one home. And maybe in terms of the, talking about the appropriateness, you want to start there before we go into the fact that you had a site plan that you worked with, and you changed it around to address the other aspects.
Sure. Let me, I'll skip ahead then to, which one is this? Wait a second, did I skip the... Which one is this? Context, no. Existing house, bird's eye, additional views, perspective views, response to natural perceived groupings, shared driveways. Did I skip over the, the shared driveway? Maybe I did.
You did.
Shared driveway, okay, shared driveway. Okay, so in, no, 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 it's not shared driveways. Response to natural features.
Sub...
18? Ah, sheet number four, okay. So this is the site that's here. So just looking elsewhere in the neighborhood, this is the main entrance to Fieldston from the highway. It's 246th Street, and there is a very large house, a big mansion, that's on a hill that once occupied a very large piece of property. And I can't quite read it, but there are probably five houses that over the years were built on that piece of property. On 246th Street, so 246th Street goes to a traffic circle and curves down, and actually there is a house on 246th Street that was a single house, and two new houses, it was a certain sized lot, and two more houses were built there. Next to that is a house on 246th and Livingston, and there's an L-shaped house here, and there's a house here that actually we designed a number of years ago that was approved by Landmarks, and it's touching the rock, it involved removal of some trees, but it was an oversized lot that another house was built upon. And basically, if you look through the neighborhood, there are, you know, a number of instances of houses that were on oversized pieces of property where houses were split off and built on them. Then what I did on this diagram was to look at other oversized lots, like is this Pandora's Box? You know, are we going to like ruin the neighborhood by doing this? So I looked at other, and there are a few others. I mean, there's, there's one here on Fieldston Road. It's a very large house, sitting up right on top of a rock, and off to the side is a lower level area, and it also could be subdivided. There's a very large piece of property, you know, not too far away, which has also the ability to add a house. There's another one here, there's another one there. So one, two, three, four. I counted four where you could relatively easily make an argument to do that. Actually, another example of a subdivision is the former Spitzer home, where Elliot Spitzer grew up as a boy. And it's a beautiful house, I've been in it, it's a Tudor house, and behind it are a few more houses that were built either in the 60s or the 70s. So there are definitely a number of examples of other oversized parcels that were subdivided and are now part of the history of development of Fieldston.
But just to clarify, the ones that you've shown us, because I think that they show lot lines, so those lot lines were created, is that right?
Yes.
That wasn't a part of the original plating?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Give me water, can I have a glass, get a glass of water? Should I go back to where I was, or, yes?
Please.
Okay. So then, this was, I was saying, this is, we spent like literally two years working with city planning, and you know that we have to come up with a site plan that is acceptable to city planning before we can submit this to Landmarks? And so this is acceptable to city planning. So if you look at the legend here, we're dealing with three factors, I think. One is steep slopes, one is a steep, this is a steep slope here, I think with the larger, lighter thing. Then the steep slope buffer is an area just uphill from it. And then there are rock formations. So you can see there's a rock formation here, rock formation there, rock here, rock there, rock there. There are also sort of boulders that are sitting around that are part of little rock gardens that are not protected features. So you can see how when we pushed this house number one away from the rock, this is the rock here, that we're really quite a ways setback. We walked this with the neighbors, and I would have to say that when I showed them where the house is actually to be built, that they, you know, mum's a word from them as far as I, what I heard, but I can't believe that they would think that this was looming over the pond as it is further back than any of the other houses. So this is the things that we have to work around suggesting the locations of the houses. This is a, we shot, we did this sheet. This is the context nearby, so you see, these are the houses across the street that are along here. There are a number of Georgian houses, a number of stucco houses, they're sort of the most commonly seen things. So this is a beautiful Georgian house here, and you'll see that what we have designed here is also a red brick house to make sort of a gateway to, as you come in on Indian Road. Then this is the existing house, which is stucco, and then this is the big Georgian house, which is that. You see over the lower left is that big Ambassadorial Residence. There's some other newer houses, this is like a drive-it house that's immediately next door, but this is the neighborhood. These are photographs of the site. So this is the existing house, as you see it from the street here, the driveway is along here, the Ambassadorial Residence is off to the side there. And then you drive, here's the driveway, it goes up through the trees, and then there's this little cul-de-sac in the back. And with the, the, the front door of the house actually faces the pond, which is unusual. And what you will see, of course, is that we are proposing that this house also have its front door face the pond, much as this does. And in fact, the house across the way, which is an existing house, it also has sort of the back facing the front, or the front door facing the pond. This house, so this is to be a shared driveway with a driveway going into a garage basement, another one going to garage basement. All of these houses have their basements in the garage to minimize the footprint. These footprints have to be as small as possible to, you know, to avoid cutting down trees. So this is, these are views looking from above. So this is the existing house here, L-shaped. This is the pond. This is just the, the end of the Ambassadorial Residence which goes like this. So this is one house here, another there, and then this is the red brick house on a separate lot. This is looking at them again here. This is looking at the, the existing house, the red brick house, the existing red brick house, and the new stucco house with the other house behind it. You really can't see it. So from each, I mean, here, what we've done is we've shown this aerial view without trees. So you're seeing it absolutely without any of the context. You'll be on the ground, so when you're standing on Fieldston Road, you will see this house. There are trees all over the place, there'll be white pine trees between these houses, so it'll be almost impossible to see those two houses at the same time. Similarly, when you're in the pond looking the other way, it'll be the same situation except you'll see house number one, not house number two. I guess one thing I wanted to show on the context, it just, is that the driveway on Fieldston Road, it humps up. So the driveway actually goes up about four feet, and then it kind of, it dips down. See, the cul-de-sac is not visible from a public way. The driveway kind of goes up, and then it kind of goes down a little bit. So these are views, again, this is the view from, this is the pond here in the wintertime. This is the rock formation, it is set back from that, and this is the house that you see. Again, with many trees digitally removed, this is another view of that house. This is the existing house, this is the red brick house behind that, and this is the stucco, the drive-it house that's there. This is, again, looking from the pond. Here you see the two houses with the white pines removed that will be planted. And one thing I also wanted to show, actually going back to the context, is this house here, here's the pond, and there are houses, as I mentioned, all the way around the pond. So this is the far side of the pond, it's not a big pond, but this is the house directly across the way. So it's got, you know, a big planting of yews and rhododendron maximum below, but you see, this is a two and a half story, a very major house that is, has very, very, you know, it's a beautiful house, nothing wrong with it, and it has a beautiful view of the pond, and we're asking for nothing more than that. In fact, what we're asking is something that is less imposing than that house. Here again are other views, this is the existing house, this is the house on the street, the other, the red brick one on the corner, more views of that, more views of the red brick house. The corner site is more elevated than the other sites, so there's sort of a rock formation here, and then it slopes down where we built the house. We push the house back where there is almost no rock to be seen. So what we, this, you know, when we worked with Landmarks on this, there were certain things that they wanted us to demonstrate, and that is, again, this is a neighborhood that's very rich in architecture, but the houses don't really line up at all, it's not a grid, and what you see often are houses that, because of whatever topography, sometimes the house will be way setback from the road, very tight against the rear property line. Or, you know, a steep slope area will force two houses to be pretty close to each other. And you see this over and over in the house where there's not like really wide spacing sometimes between the houses, and that's in fact what wound up happening between house one and house two, is because we set back the house so much from the pond, it became a little closer to house number two. And one other thing, actually, going back to the site plan, the initial site plan, is we also looked closely at where houses sit relative to the road. And it's true that some houses are quite setback on Fieldston Road, and some are closer together. This, for instance, this, this house here, the red brick house, is very much within the setbacks of the two houses nearby. This house number two... This house, number two, does project a little bit closer. I can't read, what does that say here? So what we did was we looked at other houses right nearby, because this is a little closer to the street. But if we look at the houses directly across the street, they are as close to the road, if not closer than the road than we are. So shared driveways, there are quite a few shared driveways in the neighborhood. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 other shared driveways that I saw in the neighborhood. And often, they were shared because of topographical concerns, because there were rocks or things that they were trying to avoid. So this is not an anomaly in Fieldston. This is, there was, again, dealing with Landmarks a while ago, noting that the, the house that we had designed on the, on the corner on Indian Road had a very low pitched roof. And so that's unusual. There are other examples of low pitched roofs. And of course, the Ambassadorial Residence, immediately next door, is what I would call more of a, kind of a federal style house, like Thomas Jefferson would have designed at Monticello, or the White House in Washington, where the roof is almost not visible. And the reason we designed the, that red brick house to have a low pitched roof was because it being so high on the property, it had certain height, sky exposure plane issues. And while we could have asked for a variance through the SNAD, we didn't want to ask for one. So if we had a normal sort of pitched roof, we would have had to go for another authorization, which we wanted to avoid from city planning. There was also Landmarks that asked, are there other examples in Fieldston where you see garage doors from the street? And of course, the answer is yes. Although, again, none of our garage doors, other than the red brick house face the street, they're mostly off to the side. So now we'll get into the houses. This is house number one, which is stucco with wood trim. It will have a slate-like roof material, which is on the table here, which is a material that we proposed using for the other house on 246th Street at Landmarks, which was accepted a number of years ago. Muntened windows, but jerkin head roof. It's basically what you call like a two and a half story house. It's two full stories and then an occasional dormer or element up above, but very finely detailed and very much with tall chimneys, not overwhelming in scale, but in keeping with the idiom of Fieldston, stone, veneer used, and certain elements at the base of the house. These are other elevations. So on the, on one side, there's a sort of a double height, it's not a double height room, but it's a double height bay window that's very romantic with kind of a wavy wood plank pattern up above, chimneys that are kind of incised and banded at the top. This is the back of the house, facing the white pines. Again, the roof line is very strong. We've not littered it and overdone it with dormers. You really see the beautiful lines of the roof. And the windows aren't grossly overscaled, so they're in proportion to type of architecture you see in Fieldston. Those are the floor plans. I don't think we need to go necessarily, but I can certainly answer any questions. Then those are details of the house, showing how it's to be built mainly in stucco. Then this is house number two. This is the one that fronts onto Fieldston Road. So the, the, the front entrance actually faces, the side of the house faces Fieldston Road. So this is the primary elevation which faces Fieldston Road. Again, it has sort of a double height expressed bay. This has a, you know, richly developed stone base and a type of roof that's a jerkin head at the top with these sort of flanking fins that come down on the side. The, along the side of the house, and again, there are other examples of houses in Fieldston where the front door faces the side, or front doors that are face the back, like the first one does. But it, from the sidewalk or from the driveway, you go up to the front door. There's a front porch here and various windows. Again, the roof is very much depressed here. It slopes down a fair amount so that the lower level is a basement, not a cellar. And the driveway is very much recessed into the ground. In fact, I think we even asked for a variance to make the driveway pitch a little steeper than what they lined, to really get that garage out of sight. Those are floor plans, sections. And then this is the red brick house on the corner that was always a separate lot. The, the front of the house faces Fieldston Road. You climb up some stairs, there's a front door here. And then two, this is sort of like a cube. I mean, it's, it's not romantic. It's more, you know, formal in its composition, more cubic, like a Georgian architecture. It will have very low pitched roofs, as you can see, just behind the parapet. And the parapet has this sort of spindle work that's Chinese Chippendale, actually, in inspiration. But then you'll see these breaks of these tall bay windows sort of giving more animation to the facade. Then the left-hand corner, again, the purest parapet here, there is the bay on the side and regularly ordered windows. And then sometimes you sort of see this idea of a, like a temple or a cubic, non-romantic element on top of a hill. And some people might consider it a contradiction in terms, but I think of it as a wonderful blending. And certainly, the Ambassadorial Residence is this huge elongated cubic mass on top of a very large hill. And these are the elevations that face the back. Again, simplified, not so much visible from a public way. And then these are the plans, those are the sections. These are the materials that we're proposing using for this simulated slate, stucco, stone base. Paving will be bluestone, wooden frame color and cedar woodwork. And there are actually, different houses have, the palette is slightly different. The stucco in one house is a little lighter than the other one. And then, of course, in the red brick house, we have red brick and black shutters and white trim windows. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that the commission probably has a lot of questions, but if the commission's okay, but I know there are a lot of speakers on this item. Why don't we take our public testimony first and then I'm sure that'll lead to additional questions and we can get the team back. Okay. So Christopher Gough. And just to remind everybody, there'll be given three minutes. Thank you. Christopher?
Christopher Gough for the Society for the Architecture of the City. Many years ago, we were advocating for the preservation of an old stable yard on Christopher Street in Greenwich Village. It appeared on the earliest maps and it was charming. We were told the Landmarks Commission does not protect open space. It only protects buildings. This makes absolutely no sense to the layman, then or now, but it seems to be a fact. Many well-meaning people fought for years to designate Dougliston, believing that their neighborhood would be saved from subdivision and development. But after designation, property owners continued to split their lots and new mansions continued to sprout on former gardens. Nevertheless, in a picturesque wooded suburbs, as the developers of the Dellafield Estate understood, there needs to be a little breathing room, an element of surprise, when all the lots are not the same. The two stuccoed houses fit into the slope, though there have been objections to their proximity to the park. Paradoxically, to an outsider, these two houses look quite right in the background of an ideal Fieldston, rambling and asymmetrical. They outshine many of the later houses that are actually a part of the original district as designated. The third house is proposed for a difficult site, already a separate vacant lot, a rather small, steeply sloping corner property with the usual zoning and natural area restrictions. The program is a sizable house with a two-car garage, designed in a neo-federal style in brick. Perhaps it is impossible to create a convincing federal facade under these circumstances, so alien to the way a federal country house is normally situated, yet not a townhouse either. This part of the plan, we feel, calls for reduction and provision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Levine, representing Mary Dierix, who is the Historic Preservation Consultant for the Fieldston Property Owners Association. The application to construct three houses on the property of 4680 Fieldston Road will alter the relationship of the historic house at 4680 to the landscape, will destroy the key aspects of that landscape, and will alter the significant features of Fieldston Road and of the historic district. This is a case of the right houses in the wrong place. You have the evaluation in front of you. To summarize, 4680 is picturesquely cited, a key feature of the district and has remained so since 1911. This feature should be preserved. Significant landscape elements at 4680 will be destroyed, a large rock outcropping, a dell, and the relationship of the house to the adjacent house and to the community pond. Fieldston Road is the grand boulevard of the planned community, a feature in common with other early 20th century planned suburbs. It has larger houses and larger plots of land. Adding three houses will alter that characteristic. Fieldston Road is one of the highest in the district with a plethora of landscape features such as steep hills and rock outcroppings. Replacing 4680's landscape features with houses changes that attribute. The houses on Fieldston Road and into the district are sited along the streets. One of the three houses is not. It is placed in a rear yard, thus altering that part of the Fieldston plan. Fieldston was developed as a high-end picturesque suburb and restrictions on lot sizes were used to shape the community. The relationship to house and lot was key. That relationship changes dramatically with the addition of three houses on a historic plot. With 26 properties listed as vacant land in the designation report, the precedent set for 4680 could have a major effect on the look and feel of the entire district in the future.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jennifer Rood. Is she here?
She had to leave.
Oh, she had to leave?
She's making her question that she would like to ask.
I thought she had to answer. She promised to ask.
She asked.
I'm sorry, is she here? Is, oh, you're here to speak for her? Okay.
Former Chair, Sherida Paulson, conveying former Chair Rabb's request. Former Chair Rabb does object to this proposal and feels that it is too dense, but her request of the commission is that a visit to the site be made. This site is not adequately represented by the presentation made here. It is quite varied in its topography and terrain and the presentation lacks site sections and other elements that would more accurately convey that. So she requests that you do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Sherida. And I think that makes a lot of sense. It would be helpful, I think, for all the commissioners who have not been there, to get a chance to go there and we can try and arrange that.
I was thinking a big model, stucco model would have helped too, but that's better.
Going to the site is better. All right, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Rizzo. My law firm represents the Fieldston Property Owners Association. And I'm here today to express their objections to this application. The association normally does not get involved in the land use applications of its 260 residential homeowners. But the scale of this project, the near-universal opposition of residents and of elected officials, and the precedent that it would set in Fieldston has forced the association to raise its objections today. The president of the association, Jeff Mueller, is here, as well as another board member, Sarah Follett, who discussed that in more detail. I want to just highlight four documents that are attached to a letter that I've submitted to the commission today. The first is a report by Mary B. Dierix Consulting, prepared for the association, which has already been referenced by Sandra Levine. It points out why this application and the project is inappropriate for this district. One of the defining features of the Fieldston district is the placement of homes in relationship to natural features. And obviously, this does so much to change that relationship between the historic house and this property. The second document is the resolution of the community board, which is extremely lopsided in its opposition to this project, 25 to 2. There's also a letter from each of the elected officials from this community expressing their opposition to the current application. The fourth document is a map from New York City Planning. And it shows three homes in Fieldston that are built on tax lots, which are much larger than zoning would require. And I attached that for a very important reason. In Mary Dierix's report, she highlights over two dozen vacant sites in the Fieldston Historic District. Those were left vacant for a reason, because they had important clusters of natural features which needed to be preserved, or because they served as buffers between large homes and neighboring homes. But the implications of this application are actually even worse, because what the developer has done here is to carve off separate tax lots from an existing historic tax lot and then propose development on them. There are potentially additional two dozen or more zoning compliant tax lots that could be carved out of backyards, front yards, and rear yards if this application were to be approved, absolutely changing the character of this historic district. I want to point out again that the designation report in numerous places, and very uniquely, points out this relationship between homes and natural features on varying lot sizes for a reason. I also want to conclude by correcting four mistakes, I think, in the presentation today. The first is that the tax lot at the corner of Indian Road and Fieldston Road has always existed. If you look at the 1924 Fieldston map, which is attached to the Mary Dierix's report, it shows this home at 4680 Fieldston Road set on one large lot by design. The second is that the subdivision of tax lots has been taking place for decades. It has, but that is actually the reason for the creation of this district. Last, of course, city planning has not in any way approved this application. The site plan that's been submitted to them has not been approved by the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rizzo, I just have one very quick question for you. You talked about the fact that 26 lots are left vacant. And I read the reports, the designation report, and it was actually very helpful. But there were definite changes over time. So I think in 1911, they had a plot, well, sort of the site plan, which showed the individual lots. And they developed in various phases. So there was one phase in the early 20s, then it continued till probably the 50s and 60s, and even now. So you make a point that somehow the 26 lots were not meant to be developed because they were forming buffer zones. And I just don't know where...
Where that comes from?
Where that comes from, because there was always this intent that these lots were going to develop over time. So I'm not sure whether there was any design intent or by the originators of this plan that was identifying these lots as remaining vacant. They were vacant identified in the designation report because they hadn't been developed as yet. So just if you could shed some more light on that.
Sure. I think if you read the Dierix's report, you'll get an understanding of why certain existing vacant tax lots were left in that state. That's, that's number one. Number two, I think my focus is on the carving up of existing tax lots.
Okay.
Historic tax lots.
I understand.
Which is the most dangerous precedent here.
Okay, thank you.
For me, I have the answer to your question.
That's fine. If you are going to be speaking, then you can just, yes.
Ronald Odrich, I'm going to present later.
I'm sorry.
Ronald Odrich, I will present later. But I do have an answer to your question, Chairman.
Okay.
It was, Dellafield originally made a stipulation to the estate that it sell houses only with three additional lots. They were sold in three lot packages. And that's where it came from, where the idea came from, that all the lots were not to be housed, they were not to be constructed or developed upon. They were there strictly for spacing. And that was his word, Dellafield's word.
Thank you. All right. The next speaker is Jeff Mueller.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present public testimony. I am the current president of the Fieldston Property Owners Association. I moved with my wife and currently seven-year-old son and 10-year-old daughter to Fieldston about five years ago. We bought a home at 4401 to 4403 Waldo Avenue. It was designed in 1913 by Carl von Velkenberg. Subsequently, in 1919, Dwight James Baum designed another addition. Subsequently, in nineteen nineteen, Dwight James Baum designed another addition, and then in nineteen twenty-seven, he designed a final addition. Our home was Dwight James Baum's working office for a number of years, and our home incorporates a number of interesting design elements that were used as a sales opportunity to demonstrate the craftsmanship of the community. We moved up to Fieldston for a variety of reasons, one of which was the beautiful, serene, unique, and historical nature of that community. We knew it was designated as such by landmarks, and we always believed, and I still believe to this day, that the protections of the landmarks laws will be adequately and well-applied in this case. Our community was polled as to their interest in this project, and fully ninety-three percent of the Fieldston residents reject this planned housing development. Our community board, eight representatives overwhelmingly reject this development. The four elected officials with jurisdiction over Riverdale reject this development. It couldn't be any clearer to us as a community that this development is inappropriate. I am glad, chairperson, that you suggested visiting the site, because I was going to suggest that each of you, at a time that you can, whether alone, with a loved one, a child, a grandchild, take a walk around that area and take a look at it. It is special, it is unique. The stakeholder most affected by this development is not necessarily Fieldston, it's New York City, it's our whole community. Anyone with the slightest interest in protecting our architectural and our cultural history will be affected by the approval of this project. If our goal is to preserve, if our goal is to protect the architectural, cultural, and historic significance of this special place, then the only way to accomplish that goal is to disapprove this application, and that's what we are asking you to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah Follett?
My name is Sarah Follett. I've lived in Fieldston for thirty-six years. I live at three-one-nine College Road in a house that was designed by Julius Gregory, and it's a revival Tudor house. And I live about five blocks southeast of forty-eight sixty Fieldston Road, so I cannot see this development from my house. I was last in this room thirteen years ago, in December two thousand and three, when the public hearing was held in preparation for the designation of Fieldston as a historic district. And I see a few familiar faces. Mark Silverman was counsel at that time, Stephen Burns was a member of the commission at that time, and when Fieldston committed to becoming a historic district, and there was a mutual wooing by both parties. It was clear the commission wanted to designate Fieldston as a historic district in the Bronx. It was clear the community desperately wanted to avail itself of the protection that the designation would afford. And we understood at the time it was a quid pro quo. The residents of Fieldston would give up unlimited access to their property rights in order to be protected. And since the designation was finalized in two thousand and six, about nine years ago, the relationship between the commission and the community has been essentially constructive. New houses have been built, additions have been made, significant exterior renovations have been performed. The citizens, the residents have, in all cases, submitted those plans to the commission, worked jointly with the commission, and followed the lead in order to maintain the quality of the architecture in Fieldston. However, this development, as proposed, is totally inconsistent with the Fieldston history. And if you come to Fieldston and you go to the pond and you look at the house, the Tudor house, the original Tudor house, you will see that you can see from the pond to the front door, that is an unimpeded vista. And in nineteen, in the nineteen thirties, the homeowner at that time, in fact, owned all of the lots, from Fieldston Road to Indian Pond to the southern border of the property to the pond. So you could look all the way from the pond to the home, and that's why the entrance to that house faces the pond. So we really urge the commission to continue to protect Fieldston from this kind of development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sandra Levine? Sandra Levine? Oh, okay, she already spoke. Oliver Copel?
Good afternoon, members of the commission and staff and friends. I'm Oliver Copel. I live at five-oh-one-one Waldo Avenue in Fieldston. I've lived there for twenty years. I'm a resident of Riverdale for seventy-two years, and I have represented the community as a public official elected by the residents of this community for over thirty-five years, as a member of the State Assembly, as a member of the City Council, and also as Attorney General in New York State for one year. So I know Riverdale probably as well as anybody who's still alive, and I live only two blocks from the pond. And I fished for crayfish in the pond when I was about eight or nine years old, so I know the pond very well. And let me say that the presentation was made by Mr. Burns, who is an eminent architect, was totally and utterly misleading. That's why you have to visit. I'm glad he mentioned SNAD, and I know you are not primarily responsible for and for SNAD, but he mentioned that SNAD requires a minimal disruption of natural features, or destruction of natural features, or affect on natural features. You cannot possibly make this, build these three houses and be consistent with minimal destruction of natural features. Yes, house number one, it's true, it's away from the front of the rock outcropping, but the rock outcropping is not one piece of rock that comes up six feet wide and then everything disappears. It's the front of the huge rock, and this house is going to be built right on top of the house. Yes, the front of the rock may still be visible, but it's going to be built right on top of the rock. Is that not disturbing natural features? And all kinds of big trees that are on the rock now, and you'll see them if you come and go, and be destroyed. House number two is on the lower part of that slope of the rock and many trees on it. It's probably the least disruptive, still shouldn't be built. And house number three, for him to say that's a minimal destruction of natural features, house, the lot number three is a rock. It goes up about ten, twelve feet. It's a big, huge rock, and he's going to build on top of it, or he proposes that they build on top of it, and build a garage right underneath it, into the rock. But that's a minimal destruction of natural features? This is the gem of Fieldston, the pond area. This is the area that needs preservation most and is the one is now threatened most. Now, I don't like taking away property rights, but the existing house, which is owned by the Bloomfield family, is worth millions of dollars. This property is worth millions of dollars. When we passed, and I was responsible for landmarking Fieldston, I can say that, I'm not embarrassed to say it, the council wouldn't have done it if I hadn't been there, and I did it with you or your predecessors. We did that, and we knew we were somewhat limiting property rights, equally with SNAD. We knew we were limiting property rights, and all over the United States, because of zoning and other restrictions, property rights are limited by land use considerations and landmark considerations. You could make hundreds of millions of dollars of building on top of Grand Central, but we know that's not going to happen. So this project has got to be rejected. It destroys the historic district we worked so hard to create.
Thank you. Sherida Paulson?
I'm going to read two letters. The first one is from the Riverdale Nature Preservancy, of which I'm the chairman, and this is the letter that we sent to Community Board Eight, which was copied to the commission. The Riverdale Nature Preservancy opposes the construction of three houses known as the Bloomfield Development at forty-six eighty Fieldston Road. Applications are currently before the City Planning Commission and the Landmarks Preservation Commission. The Fieldston Historic District, as we all know, was designated in two thousand and six. The proposed design and site plan are not appropriate to the historic district. As proposed, the three new buildings will be highly visible and prominent, engulfing and distracting from the existing historic house on the site. The new buildings will also obscure the primary entrance to the existing historic house, which has a unique sighting from which the house draws its distinction. With respect to the streetscape, the proposed buildings do not fit Fieldston's usual pattern of setbacks and distances between buildings. They are closer to both the street and to other buildings. The preservancy believes that the proposed development both distracts and detracts from the Fieldston Historic District's sense of place and the historic setting of the existing home. It is not appropriate to the historic district. And... Second letter to the commission. As a resident of the Riverdale area, although not within the Fieldston Historic District, I write to respectfully request that the commission deny this application to construct three new houses on the site of one of the historic district's oldest houses, designed and constructed in nineteen seventeen through eighteen. The designation report describes the house as having no major alterations to the state, and its site plan remains as originally designed by Manon McNeil, with notable site features identified in the report, including a fieldstone retaining wall and steps, stone edging at the driveway, and mature trees, and those features are not located in one cluster but are sprinkled around the site and up the driveway. The placement of three new buildings in positions that block views of the original house on the site and in locations far too close to Fieldston Road are completely inappropriate to this beautiful boulevard at the heart of the district. An additional consideration of this proposal should take note that this house, unlike others in the district, is sighted with its entrance facing the pond. The driveway and entrance sequence form a unique site feature and should be considered as significant features in evaluating the effects of new construction on this site. This site's location is also particularly sensitive. Indian Road has two contemporary houses, which were part of the inspiration for the request to become a historic district. The buff stucco house shown in some of the photographs and a brick, more modern, house across the street. Those two houses are designed and constructed per the zoning resolution, which allows for the houses to be located closer to the road. The location of the existing house on this site and the location of the brick house, which is Kitty Corner, allow for far more space, and the other spacing along the site, I think, is just, when you look at the site plan presented, there are just too many buildings there. So knowing that this road, this location, was an inspiration for the request of this designation as a historic district, I ask that the commission really also take a look at the site, but also look at some of the other buildings in the district, and note that while there are subdivided sites, this site has never been subdivided, and when you see the spacing of the houses and the topography of the area, I think you'll see that less is more. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Luciano? Andrea Luciano?
My name is Andrea Luciano. We purchased our house at fifty-twenty-two Waldo Avenue in two thousand and seven, and we're still renovating it. Our house was built in nineteen thirty-one by Dr. David C. Bull and is at the northernmost end of Waldo Avenue. In describing Fieldston, a certain adjective crops up often in the commission's two thousand and six designation report: intact. This intactness did not happen by chance. It is the result of generations of residents who've put their time and money into shaping and preserving this community. As early as eighteen eighty-two, the Delafield family mapped their roads in a way that would preclude the imposition of the city grid. When this threat arose again in the mid-eighteen nineties, the Delafields preserved their vision of Fieldston by developing the roads themselves. When the Delafield heirs decided in nineteen twenty-three to liquidate their holdings, the Fieldston Property Owners Association was created to buy the remaining plots and see to it that Fieldston continued to be developed as the Delafields had originally envisioned. During the Depression years, a group of Fieldston homeowners purchased three central parcels rather than have them sold at auction, with little control over how the land would be used. Residents organized once again in nineteen thirty-eight to stop a proposed apartment building and succeeded in getting Fieldston zoned for single-family homes only. In nineteen seventy-one, the Fieldston residents prevented the Riverdale Y from being built on vacant land at two-hundred-and-forty-sixth Street and Delafield Avenue. And in two thousand and six, the efforts of Fieldston residents to have the commission designate Fieldston as a historic district were successful. For more than one hundred and thirty years, Fieldston homeowners have fought to protect and preserve this gem of a community. We therefore urge the commission to keep Fieldston intact for future generations and reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. David Steinberger?
I reside with my family at forty-nine hundred Goodrich Avenue in a house that has been, that was designed by the architect Dwight James Baum. We moved to Fieldston four years ago from Manhattan and renovated this home. One of the things that drew us to the community was the fact that it was protected by the Landmarks Commission. When you live in Fieldston, when you spend time in Fieldston, you realize you're indebted to past generations and that have given us an extraordinary legacy, and it does go all the way back to Frederick Law Olmsted in the eighteen eighties. He laid out a design for Fieldston that has very much been realized today, and he specifically spoke at that time, wrote at that time, about the natural features explicitly, the rock outcroppings, the trees, the steep slopes. He said that the community had the potential to be one of those beautiful planned communities in the United States. And it was through his work and the many generations that followed, as Andrea talked about, that we've inherited something extraordinary today. And we have to thank the Landmarks Commission for its role in this. When it established the district, it specifically said, and I'm quoting from the report, "The district is a rare, largely intact, romantic planned community set amidst a varied topography of winding trees, tree-lined streets, and dramatic rock outcroppings. Houses were placed to incorporate rock outcroppings and large trees as design elements." Nothing embodies this more than the current site that's being talked about to be developed. And now, I would say, our generation has a choice. So all these generations have given us this extraordinary legacy, and the question is, what is our generation going to do? We don't have our children here or our grandchildren here, they don't get to vote, only you get to vote. So I'm just asking you, please, let's make sure our generation doesn't drop the ball. We've inherited something extraordinary. If Olmsted were here today, he would urge you not to go forward with this development. Please do the right thing. Let's preserve Olmsted's vision, let's preserve what you tried to safeguard when the commission established this site, let's preserve what's really an extraordinary, extraordinary community for future New Yorkers. Please vote no and block this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronald Odrich?
I live at forty-seven ten Livingston Avenue. I've been there for forty-one years, Dwight James Baum house. We're not in view of the pond where we live, although we're fairly close by. Our children and grandchildren have also fished for crayfish there, Oliver, and we've enjoyed it, and needless to say that the pond is a very, very significant part of our community. The Bloomfields' request, a certificate of appropriateness for their project, the inappropriateness of this request, is revealed by the project's plan to violate the basic protections due landmark building sites in a historic district. For example, the landmarked home built in nineteen seventeen on the Bloomfield property is the only home on the entire stretch of Fieldston Road designed with its back facing the road, as you've heard. It was purposefully sighted with its front facing the beautiful setting of Delafield Park and Pond. That's the original name of the Indian Road. That’s the original name of the Indian Pond. It was built on the only appropriate flat surface available on that site that does not have a large rock base. As a single house, it is the only structure appropriate for that site. This original design respects the space and natural topography characteristic of that location. As it is, as it stands, the site with one landmarked house complies with the intent of the original design elements of all of Fieldston. The Fieldston Brothers project would decimate the many natural features on the Bloomfield site in order to construct three additional houses. And you are being asked to validate that as appropriate. That would degrade the landmarked home that exists, make a sham of landmarking process, and it would create a row of forest structures crammed into a small space, completely out of character when viewed from the pond and from Fieldston Road, both with current vistas of appropriately spaced homes. The construction of any house on that site will destroy the pond and its setting and contradict Fieldston’s designation by this commission, which seeks to preserve the integrity of the original design of a historic district. This project has been determined inappropriate by Community Board Eight, because it is an extraordinarily, extraordinarily inappropriate project. For these reasons, we urge you, please, to reject the Bloomfield Brothers project in its entirety. Thank you.
Lee Michelle?
Good afternoon. My name is Lee Michelle, and I live with my husband and two daughters at 4731 Fieldston Road. Our home is a Dwight James Baum-designed Tudor Revival home, which was constructed from 1927 to 28. We purchased our house in 2011 from a family who had lived there since 1960. We undertook a two-year renovation. My husband likes to say it was only a year and a half, but it was actually over two years. We moved in in 2013. We purchased our property because we wanted to invest in a community that respected and treasured our common history. In Fieldston, we had an opportunity to steer clear of the unchecked overdevelopment that plagues other nearby neighborhoods. Fieldston’s landmark status was an important selling point for our family. During our renovation, we worked with landmarks, city planning, the Department of Buildings, ConEd, and the Fieldston Property Owners Association. Our experience shows us that the guidelines and protections in place are fair, reasonable, and crucial, given the historic homes and delicate ecosystem that is Fieldston. We know firsthand that renovating an old house puts a strain on the neighborhood’s shared systems. To build three new homes on this plot of land is far beyond the scope of sensible neighborhood development. The Bloomfield development sits squarely on Fieldston Road, as you’ve heard, the central thoroughfare of the Fieldston Landmark District and the heart of our community. The development of this property completely destroys the well-thought-out proportion of the existing residential landscape and surrounding streets. This project undermines Fieldston’s sense of openness and the bucolic feeling that defines this neighborhood’s historic character. In 2006, the LPC designated Fieldston a New York City Historic District to stop piecemeal development and distinguish it as a historic community worth protecting. Given the central location of the development, the unreasonable scope of the proposal, and the disruption to the unique natural topography, I urge you to uphold what your predecessors deemed worthy of preservation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Travis Epps?
Good afternoon, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Travis Epps, and I am a resident of the Fieldston Historic District. My wife and I live in the house at 4711 Fieldston Road. We have lived there for 40 years. The house has been in our family for about 80 years. Fieldston is not only a wonderful place to live and to raise children, it is an asset to the entire surrounding community. It is a place to walk and jog safely. It is a place to visit nature up close and personal. When the designation of the Fieldston Historic District was proposed, we were strong and active supporters of that designation, because we believed that the designation was essential to preserve the unique character of the district. Fieldston is not a gated community. It was conceived as a planned residential park, and it continues to be that. During its formative years, those plans were supported by architectural review covenants. Thus, the quality of the present streetscapes you see in Fieldston are not just a happy accident. Today, the future of that quality is in the hands, your hands, of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, which has the responsibility for administering the historic district designation. In the course of that administration, some changes from the status quo are reasonable, necessary, and inevitable. But some changes are so fundamental that they will move Fieldston beyond a tipping point and lose that which was to be preserved. If the LPC approves this proposal, it will create a precedent and an incentive for other property owners to follow suit and place multiple houses on a parcel that currently supports only a single house. There are numerous sites in Fieldston which offer this profitable opportunity. And it is predictable that other landowners will follow suit. And in that land rush, the nature of Fieldston may disappear. I implore you not to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Johanna Oldrich?
My name is Johanna Oldrich, and I am the person who, on September 6, 2001, requested that the LPC, then chaired by Sharita Paulson, consider Fieldston for historic district designation. In my recent letter to Chair Skriniwassan opposing the Fieldston Brothers proposal, I included a copy of my original request and the reasons for it. And oddly enough, the same reasons apply for opposing the construction plans of this proposal. But in this case, there are still more reasons. May I? The physical location of 4680, a Butts-Della Field Pond, a dot of land owned and meticulously maintained by the FPOA. The pond services all of Riverdale as a mini-nature preserve and family destination. Functionally, the pond is, in fact, a public space in a private space to which the public has full access. The current proposal to construct three houses on land literally adjacent to it will permanently destroy the pond and the forest ambiance that the preserve now provides to the Riverdale community. Imposing three impossibly large houses on this landscape will not only enhance the historic district, it will not in any way enhance the street view or any part of Fieldston. In fact, the project detracts from Della Field’s meaning and the intent of Fieldston’s original design as a residential park. I urge this commission to oppose the Fieldston Brothers project as completely inappropriate for this historic district. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Shiva?
My name is Elizabeth Schoyer, and I live at 4730 Fieldston Road. It’s about a block and a half from the proposed development, but I cannot see it from the house. My house was built in 1929, 1930, by the architect Julius Gregory for Sidney and Elizabeth Gamble. My husband and I have lived there since 1991, when we purchased the home from Mrs. Gamble’s estate. Thus, we are only the second owners of this beautiful landmarked house, which we have not renovated, where we have raised our four children, and which, of course, is still known as the Gamble House. If my memory is correct, the movement to landmark Fieldston stemmed from the construction of two houses on Indian Road directly adjacent to this proposed development, as well as the insertion of small angled windows and a small extension of a house on Della Field Avenue, and the extension of a house, of an existing house already rather large, on Fieldston Road. Concern over all of these changes led to the landmarking of the entire community, with the LPC deciding that the natural beauty and planned residential restraint that embodied Fieldston through its history were worthy of preservation and control. Fieldston residents, and those who consider buying homes here, there, have recognized that with protection comes some restriction, as is true through many areas of social and communal life. Now, people with no skin in the game want to change the rules for their personal profit: the developers, who have turned their backs on their old neighborhood, and the other facilitators, who do not live in Fieldston, who have been paid substantial amounts to quietly advance this development, and who presumably stand to gain further financially should the project be allowed to move forward. The approval of this development would set a terrible precedent in the community. Many of us have large or multiple lots, which could easily sustain the construction of one or more additional homes. Where would it end? In a few years, Fieldston might look like other residential communities that have not benefited from LPC supervision, dense, hodgepodge, and developed far beyond the intentions of the original planners and the stated goals and purposes of the Landmark Preservation Commission. I ask you, please, do not approve the Fieldston Brothers development application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Fairman?
My name is Michael Fairman, and I live at 5022 Waldo Avenue, a colonial revival house built in 1931. Pardon me. We are only the third owner of this house, and it’s at the northernmost end of Waldo Avenue. In the eight years we have lived there, we’ve been engaged in an extensive restoration of the house, during which we have meticulously and very gladly complied with all regulations and findings of the LPC and its staff. We believe that everyone should do the same, and it’s what we all signed up for. Last week, Mr. Howard Weiss, an attorney for the applicants, was quoted in the Riverdale Press as saying it’s somewhat disingenuous that some of the neighbors who would speak in opposition to what was proposed, adding that a number of homes owned by FPOA members were only built in recent decades. The implication could not be further from the truth. First, one need not live in a historic home in order to be in favor of upholding and preserving Fieldston’s landmarked areas. Pardon me. It’s a privilege we enjoy, sorry, it’s a privilege to enjoy the entire historic district, including the landmarked natural features and the landmarked open spaces we seek to preserve, regardless of the age or location of one’s residence. And I felt that way before we moved there. Second, more than 80% of the homes in Fieldston were built before 1950, and an overwhelming majority of Fieldston residents have indicated they do not support this project. And third, the Fieldston residents speaking at this hearing today and who have spoken previously have stated the years in which their homes were built, and the overwhelming majority were built prior to 1950. It’s interesting to note that our 1931 house is one of the newer ones among today’s speakers. I ask you to deny this application.
Thank you. Susie Diakou?
So, I’m Susie Diakou, and my husband Alec and I bought two Fieldston houses 10 years ago. 4720 Gwovenir, a French provincial castle designed by Frank Forster, and 4530 Della Field, a Tudor Revival designed by Renwick, Aspenwold, and Tucker. Acting as general contractor, Alec renovated both houses over two years each. We plan to sell one and live in the other. Although we love to plant our own gardens and tend our own land, the most precious place in Fieldston is public, Indian Pond, where one can sit on a bench and watch mallards, turtles, and goldfish, even see a black-crowned night heron being robbed of its catch by a seagull. The beauty and wildness there and its peace will vanish with those impinging houses. The excessive Bloomfield plan is an outrage.
Arlene Feldmayer?
I’m Arlene Feldmayer. I’m a Community Board Eight member. However, I speak in my private capacity as a 20-year Fieldston resident. We live at 4660 Waldo Avenue, excuse me, three blocks away from the Bloomfield property and out of its sightlines. Our house was built in 1971-72, designed by Jonathan Cogashall, and is mid-20th century modern. The Fieldston Brothers Inc. project is not appropriate based on the characteristics of the historic district this commission describes in its own designation report. I’m going to quote from it. It mentions that “original developers followed natural topography, preserved as far as possible wooded knolls, dels, and hillocks. They sought to make flat, uninteresting rows of suburban houses impossible. Rather, designers sighted the houses on their lots to take advantage of the varied, picturesque topography. Your report notes dramatic rock outcroppings. The scheme persists in modern houses, whose developers,” again quoting, “share a similar way of setting into the landscape.” Thus, Fieldston was landmarked in large part because its houses respected natural features. Sighting and topography makes Fieldston unique as much as the architecture. However, the proposed project obliterates natural features, particularly the very sort of dramatic rock outcropping your report cites, found particularly on the north and west of the property. The house that’s going to be on Indian Road as proposed would sit on top of a rock. These new houses would not set into the landscape, they were designed rather to accommodate driveways and parking spaces. I urge this commission to preserve the natural features that led to landmarking. Please, follow your own designation report as set forth by the Administrative Code. This project is not appropriate. Please deny a certificate of appropriateness. Thank you.
Stephen Nelson?
Hello, my name is Stephen Nelson. We have resided at 5021 Fieldston Road for 10 years. Our house, a Tudor Revival, was built about 1923 and is within the Fieldston Historical District. Our house is one-half block from the development. We walk by the development on all three sides, Fieldston Road, Indian Road, and the Della Field Pond, many times every week. I urge the commission to deny approval of the development. Development is not compatible with the protected status of the site and the community. Fieldston is a special historic district within New York City because of the manner in which the houses were developed to exist in harmony with the natural features of the terrain. This adds a special aspect to historical protection of Fieldston, different from that needed for many other landmark neighborhoods, where it is only the buildings or houses which have historical qualities and need protection. The important relationship between houses and Fieldston and the natural setting of hills, rock outcroppings, and towering trees was acknowledged in the commission- rock outcroppings, and towering trees was acknowledged in the commission's designation report for Fieldston. Fieldston developed winding streets that followed the natural contours of the terrain compared to the flattened grid common elsewhere in New York. Lots were intended to vary in size. Rock outcroppings, large trees, and hills were intentionally incorporated into the architectural design of each house, not destroyed to make a building lot. This development would crowd four houses onto a site that currently provides a perfect setting for one historic house situated on it. It is important and consistent with the original plan for Fieldston and its landmark designation to preserve these large settings for individual homes. The developer would destroy a material amount of the original natural setting and completely change the nature and quality of this site. The fact that there are other clusters of houses and other houses with similar characteristics or elements in Fieldston does not mean that this development should be approved. Doing so could lead to overbuilding and destruction of the character of the Fieldston Historical District. It is also important to note that the corner lot is integral to the site now, regardless of whether or not it has been a separate lot or not at different times, and perhaps the fact that the Bloomfield family bought the lot in the 1950s reflects that. It is also worth noting that Indian Road has uncharacteristic modern buildings and the new corner house would add to this in appearance. The garage is particularly glaring. I urge the commission to reject the proposal. I also submitted a letter, an email, yesterday which I urge the commission to read. Thank you.
My name is Derek Hapanegro and I live at 4900 Goodridge Avenue. I live in a Dwight James Baumhouse that was built in 1916 and it's a Georgian Revival house. I've devoted my entire career to architecture and design. First, as an editor at House Beautiful, the almost 120-year-old magazine that was started by Frank Lloyd Wright, then as the Design and Decoration Director for Elle Decor, followed by the Style, being the Style Director at Domino Magazine, and most recently, I was the Editor-in-Chief of Veranda Magazine. And as you can imagine, being an editor of a magazine, you get lots of projects submitted to you, and countless ones have come across my desk. Some of them are thoughtful and beautiful and others, as you might imagine, fall very short of those qualities. There is often a sense of inappropriateness and inauthenticity to the worst offenders. My husband and I moved to Fieldston four years ago after living in Manhattan for over 30 years. What attracted us to Fieldston was its authenticity, its appropriateness of the houses and their surroundings. After seeing the Upper West Side taken over by banks, by drugstores, and chain stores, Fieldston was a breath of fresh air. The new houses being proposed are inappropriate and lacking in authenticity. I am sure Olmstead and the other original Fieldston planners would agree. Please help preserve one of the most special and thoughtful places left in New York City. Thank you.
Joseph Fink? Is Joseph Fink here? All right. Are there any other speakers? Yes, please come forward and state your name into the record, please.
My name is Elizabeth Pimentel. I live at 4600 Fieldston Road. It's about two blocks away from the Indian Pond. I don't have a view of the pond, but I live within walking distance. The Indian Pond area has always been a place of peace and a place with restorative effects and powers. So, I'm speaking more from a personal point of view right now. My husband would often take my mother-in-law there before she died of Alzheimer's disease. So, when she was, you know, in the stages of Alzheimer's and was able to walk and then in a wheelchair, he would take her there because of its openness and because of its tranquility. Building three more buildings there would change the contemplative and peaceful nature of the area.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right. We received a recommendation from Community Board Eight stating that they disapprove of the project. We also received a letter from, so we received a joint letter from Congressman Engel, State Senator Klein, Assemblyman Dinowitz, and Councilmember Cohen. They do not support the project, but they do say, while we do not take a position that the applicant has no right to build anything on the property, we do believe that the application as proposed is flawed and will compromise the integrity of the Fieldston Historic District. We have also received, excuse me, 63 letters against the project and we received one letter in support. Okay. The development team liked to respond to some of the issues. And I think before we just start with the discussion and questions, just on the natural features, and I don't know if Sarah or Mark are here can speak to it a little bit, the designation report does talk about the natural features. We have Rules for Fieldston, which was adopted at the same time as the designation was adopted, I believe, which talks about rules regulating the natural features. There are certain things, for example, trees, that do not come before the commission. Mark, do you want to add anything else? I know it also notes that when it comes to natural features, the recognition that the special natural area rules apply, which is from the zoning resolution, and any development or enlargement has to go before City Planning Commission to make, for them to make that determination regarding topography and slopes and other natural features. Mark?
Yeah, I would just add to that, that the commission has always, in designating Fieldston, was always very aware of the issue of dual regulation and the sort of potential burden and conflicts that that would result in. We've tried very hard to coordinate all applications with the two agencies and that certainly is reflected in the rules and the master plan. The commission, with respect to landscape features, recognized in the designation report the importance of the siding of the houses in connection with these features. It identified features generically as important without identifying them specifically in each case where they are important. And I think the commission, there was an assumption that the special natural area rules would, were very restrictive and therefore would guide development and the commission, you know, would work in connection with that. But there was always, in the rules, it's explicit, there's a reservation, of course, of authority for the commission to look at every application by itself, regardless of what the SNAD rules would produce or what was acceptable under SNAD. And the commission would look at those in the context of siding, its relationship to other houses, and significant aspects of the district.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Yes.
I would say that when you discuss features, for instance, like rock formations, I would dare say that the entire site is under rock, and the entire neighborhood of Fieldston is under rock once you dig down. But what you have to do is, you have to have the site surveyed and very carefully show where rock formations break through the surface. And so, for instance, this concern about the rock formation near the pond, this is where that rock formation is. That is a matter of fact, as surveyed. And the only part of House Number One that intrudes on that rock is just the very bottom of the steps. So, I think we have to look very carefully at the rules of SNAD, which to me are more restrictive actually than the principles by which Fieldston was built historically. I think that the degree to which trees must be protected, to which you must stay off of steep slopes and safe buffers, is one of the highest thresholds of any neighborhood, I would dare say, in the nation. So, this is why this took several years for us to get to this process. Nonetheless, I mean, obviously, development requires removal of trees and we can't say that that's not the case. I would say that there have been two houses in Fieldston that have been, new houses, that have been approved by the LPC post-approval, you know, the designation of the district, one of which my firm designed, which was a subdivision from a larger lot. And then there's another one on a lower road that also was built subdivided. So, there is this, this has happened before and approved by the LPC. And so, the LPC would have to change directions and say, what we approved before is no longer allowable, or it's not appropriate in this case, I suppose. But it has been approved on several occasions.
Okay. I know that, and that may be the case, and perhaps when you come back, you can sort of maybe explain that to us. But I think there are subdivisions that may have happened and their circumstances may be different from the one that we see over here. And I'll just tell you my initial thoughts based on some of the testimony, but even just looking at the district is that I think there is a real issue about the size of the lots and their variation, which determines the character. And so, I would agree with some of the testimony that changes that we make as a result of this application, should the commission approve what's before us, could have a very, very significant effect on lots and what make the district overall. So, that's one issue. And, you know, you've talked about the fact that there've been some history where lots have been subdivided, and I would really appreciate when you come back, you tell us a little bit more and even sort of cite those examples and explain to us when they happened, so it gives some context. I think the second issue has to do, at least for me, is that you can have subdivisions, but I don't know whether that speaks to the number of homes that you're proposing over here. And I think Commissioner Shamir has sort of talked about the fact of the cul-de-sac and shared driveways have a different effect than cul-de-sacs. And so, you could have a shared driveway that goes into the lot and the two homes on either side. When you start adding more and more homes around a circular driveway, I think it takes a very different feel, a feel that at least initially, just looking at the site plan, is not reflected anywhere. So, it reminds me of other subdivisions that happen in neighborhoods, which are not historic and do not have that pattern. So, I question the rationale or the argument of having three homes on the site. And so, there's a subdivision to begin with and also just the fact that even if you can make the argument that some subdivision is a part of the development history of the neighborhood, then the fact that you've decided to develop it with these three homes in this configuration.
And what, you know, I, what I tried to show is that there's a density on the block that this falls under. You look at the density across the street, it's substantially under that. In terms of-
But the only thing I would say is even in the density, and I think maybe if you come back, the density, there are many factors that sort of feed into what is the density. And you've only talked about lot coverage. So, if you start thinking about lot coverage and then you start thinking about the size of the home, because you could have a small footprint, but it can be three floors high. And so, they have different FAR significance. And then the other part of density is just how, what are the setbacks and the relationship between different buildings? And I think that hasn't been really explained. So, maybe that would, I think, help the commission overall in sort of understanding how the site planning is actually can meet the level of appropriateness.
Just to your question about the shared driveway, I mean, it would be easy for us, for instance, on this house, to have a separate curb cut to put in a garage on that side of the house. We could do that. And, you know, if that's something that would be more acceptable or palatable for the commission, that could be done. We felt that to minimize the pavement, to minimize the curb cuts, and to minimize the number of trees, you know, it's the balance that we're trying to strike. But we chose to take the shared driveway route, having seen that in so many other places in Fieldston.
I guess what that does, similarly, you could make one home there and it'll be a driveway that's shared by two homes. So, I guess perhaps you could explain to us the thinking of three homes to begin with.
The thinking of the three homes was a request by the owner of the property. And so, that was, you know, an initial thing that was, you know, seriously considered and was an initial part of the strategy.
Okay. All right. Other questions? Yes, Fred and then Adi.
Obviously, we're going to come back and talk about all this, and I think it's very interesting for the commission and so different from our normal deliberations which occur in the built-up parts of the city. So, I think this is just new. And I've been on the commission over six years and this is still feeling new and different. I think the trip there with all of us together would be very useful, if possible. Occasionally, we do that, and I think that would be very useful in this case. I'm sure I have many other questions, but one thing, and I don't, we don't need to talk about it right now, but maybe when you come back, it would be interesting to hear, Steve, you describe a little bit more about House Three. Many of the, much of the testimony said that sits on top of a rock and it looked like it sits on top of a rock from the pictures that we could see. You might want to talk about that a little bit more.
Actually, before we, when it was presented the first time before the Community Board, like four years ago, they were talking about the rock over there. And when you go to that site, and I hope you go to see the site, what you'll see is a field of Baltic ivy and you will see small rocks that were made to be like a little rustic rock garden from day one, probably 1920s. And, but the community asked us to go look back at that. So, we did. We went and, I went back there and I literally pulled the ivy away from the ground and I pulled it away from where I could see this man-made stuff was made. And then when we discovered there was some bedrock there, but it had been surveyed and the surveyor was supposed to look for, and it was not visible. So, it was only after we sort of cleared the land that we saw these small discontinuous elements of rock. So, that was when we actually pushed the house further back. But again, SNAD doesn't forbid you from building on rock. You're just supposed to minimize your footprint on the rock. And the house that is under construction now that we designed before on 256th Street, 246th Street, definitely touches the rock, but is set back from it in a reasonable fashion.
Okay. Adi? I think you want to comment and then-
Sure. Well, I should say that I'm very, I grew up in Riverdale and I'm very, very familiar with this site and love Indian Pond. Maybe my, the reason that I'm involved in preservation has to do with a particular trauma that I suffered in this area of Riverdale. And that is that I attended SAR Academy and went to school in the Tuscanini Mansion and in its carriage house and later in the new building. And then one day, the mansion was gone. And there are just some incredibly special places on the east, on the west sides of the highway here, and Fieldston is among them. I think that the key for this thing, and to go back to this issue, to this particular site, to go back to the issue of the hidden driveways or the cul-de-sac, is that while you mentioned that there, and you've noted for us where these hidden driveways are in the area, none of them are off of Fieldston Road. And that's important because that's the kind of the setup for the whole, the configuration of your site plan, which says that one, you cannot access all three of these buildings, I mean, the one existing and the two new ones, if not off of a hidden driveway. And that is simply not the case anywhere on Fieldston Road, which is this major road that wants to preserve the size of the lots and the one entry, despite the fact that in this case, the existing house fronts onto the back. But still, the one entry onto the one house belonging to that one property. So, I think that the premise is flawed because there is no precedent on Fieldston Road.
All right. Yes, Diana?
Yeah, I was just, I was very interested in the discussion about the use of the pond because I'd wondered if it was sort of a community resource as opposed to, you know, more restricted. And adjacent to it is something called Dellafield Park. And I was wondering if that's also kind of a, maybe Adi has as much idea as he about this matter.
But what's the question?
The area that's called Dellafield Park, which is on that side, is it-
There's some ground, there's some land around the pond that is part of the pond-
And walk around it.
Zone. Right. There's a couple of benches, a stone wall. It's quite lovely.
Which people in the community-
Right. There's little walkways and steps- There's little walkways and steps.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I was, we can go and see it, but I wanted to hear from people.
And, you know, when you're at the pond, there are a variety of houses that are around it now, some better than others, but they're there. And then there are two sort of big wooded patches. One of the wooded patches is this wooded patch, and then there's one across the way. There's another wooded patch. And they're privately owned. And I think people visually think that that belongs to the park, and it certainly enhances the quality of the park. But they are not actually part of the park. So I urge you to go, I think it would be good to do a site thing, and to realize, you know, how far in do you need to see 150 feet of woods in order to save the feeling of the pond, knowing that the other houses around it only preserved 60 feet of woods? So those are the sorts of things you'll have to determine. I mean, you're going to become sort of, it's a naturalistic question as much as an architectural question.
Just on the site plan itself, where you've shown the new homes, so you have this rock outcrop right in front of it. Is that actually, that's underground or is it-
No, that's where it's come above ground.
Okay, so it's, does that shield or does that obscure the two homes, the new homes from the pond, or those will rise above that? I mean, I'm sure-
They will rise, they will rise, they are at sort of the level of this one. This is quite a bit lower than that one. So this is, the peak is right here. So it's starting to slope down. And then by the time you get to Fieldston Road, it's quite a bit lower.
All right. And from, right now, from the pond, can you see the mansion that's next door? And is that going to be-
The Bloomfield House?
The Bloomfield, the Bloomfield House, you can see.
The Embassy.
The Embassy, sorry, the Embassy.
This is, I think this is-
Here's the context, right? So when you look from the pond, the pond is here, you, the big, are you asking about the brick house?
Right, yes.
Sort of a diagonal view?
Right.
Looking through there. I don't have that view. This is a view of it from the street, although one of them might show it a bit in the background. This, again, remember, this is the house across the pond. This is directly across. This is right here, directly across the site here. And next to that is the empty lot. And then this is the one, the drive-it house that I said also backs onto the pond, which is here. These are the two houses which, when they were built, were seen as, you know, we've got to do something to protect Fieldston. And by the way, I was very much in favor, writing letters to the editor at the time, and very strongly in favor of landmarking this district. You know, obviously a great district.
Right, okay. Other comments, yes, Roberta?
So who, the park, is that a city park or private park? Is that a neighborhood?
It's a private park.
It's a private park.
Yes.
Is it owned by the Fieldston homeowners?
Yes.
Okay, because they bought up all the property at one point, right?
It's a private park. The streets are private, but customarily, people from the public have been welcome to go there. You don't have to, like, sign in and go through a gate or anything.
Yes.
Where is the driveway to the existing house?
That is, in fact, that cul-de-sac. If I go, let's see. The driveway to the existing house is this. It just goes like this.
Is that wide?
It swirls around and it goes around a circle. It is a bit narrower, Chris. We had to make it wider because in order to have this house be so distant from the road, the building department required a ruling by the fire department that it was okay. And the fire department, it took a long time for them to go through their bureaucracy, which is another story. But they approved this, but we had to widen the driveway to about 15 feet wide.
And Steve, did you have other examples that were three houses served by a driveway?
I think so.
You mentioned.
I think so. I would, you know, it's, I'd have to sort of look at it carefully. This, for instance, is a driveway that goes in. It serves a house on the left, and then it serves two people in the back. So this is a triple one. I think this one, some of them are doubles and some of them are triples. The one that Elliot Spitzer's childhood home, I think it's maybe just a double. They build a road that bypassed the original road. So there's a mixture.
All right. Other comments or questions? Yes.
Comments or, are we in comments or?
We can go into comments, yes.
I mean, I think, I know this area really, 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 really well. I live steps away. And I've done a lot of work in the district before coming here. So I appreciate the presentation, and I think that if anyone does know this district from an architectural and design point of view, it's certainly the applicants. I mean, Steve, both from sitting here and from his work in Fieldston knows the district very well. And I think that that shows in the application. The application has attempted to address a lot of the concerns that anyone, including the applicants, including the testimony, has brought up, both in terms of the density and the drives and all these things. They are quantified in the booklet. But I, despite that perhaps, I share some of the concerns that you raised and that were raised in the application. And the thing that makes this hard is because it's so different than Brownstone, Brooklyn, or Ridgewood, or some other place where the patterns are so clear. We can say that, you know, if there's a 25-foot lot typical on a west-side block, that development should take that into consideration, and that increment or that rhythm should reflect itself here. The rhythm is arrhythmic. The rhythm is idiosyncratic. And so even though the numbers look really good on the cover sheet, I think there's something that I can't quite quantify, but that I feel confident, doesn't feel right about the rhythm and density of the houses one and two in relationship to the original 4680 Fieldston Road. I think that certainly if the applicant, as you had suggested, were to kind of reconsider the notion of two houses there and perhaps make it, consider it as one, I think a lot of issues could be addressed. Number one, the more typical driveway relationship in Fieldston generally is not one of a cul-de-sac, but is one of, you do have a lot of instances of shared driveways, maybe not on Fieldston Road proper. But, I mean, the difference between a cul-de-sac and a shared driveway is that the shared driveway is kind of off to the side. It's not the focus of the house, it's not the focus of the lot. These houses seem to cluster around the cul-de-sac in a very kind of suburban, dead-end way. And I think that the orientation of the house to the street or to the pond is the more typical relationship that a house would have certainly on Fieldston Road, where pretty much all the houses, except for this one, 4680, face Fieldston Road. And where a shared driveway could be considered part of the morphology of the place. Further, by reducing it from two to one, you could potentially set the house further away from the pond. And the problem with the siding is, as one of the renderings showed, the house, as you noted, the topography goes up. And it kind of looms, yes, like the house across the pond on the other side, which is kind of this kind of, almost like Bavarian castle thing that looms in a very rustic way over the pond. This one, less intentionally, I think, has a looming quality over that vista. By moving it, I guess by considering the nature of the micro-topography in this particular site, you could perhaps try to have the house nestle more within the body of that very deep site and have less of an impact on either the street or the pond. In terms of the house, house number three, I think that the choice of the style, I think that the notion of having a house there, I think, for me, is acceptable. I think that the scale of development on that side of the house is smaller generally, and I think that that could be an individual lot, even though perhaps initially it wasn't. I think that the particular siding of that house and the style chosen to, for that house, the brick square pavilion, is a very hard one to integrate with the very unique topography of that particular corner. And so it might be possible to create a more integrated relationship where the levels of that promontory are kind of integrated with the design of the house more, instead of having the house kind of feel like it's just kind of plunked on to that peak. I think that would be both more appropriate to the way development has taken place in Fieldston generally. And it would, on this site, make the house better for its particular site and maybe better for the general area. I think that in terms of the aesthetics of the houses, I think that houses one and three are appropriate styles for Fieldston, the flat or relatively shallow pitched Georgian house. There are a number of them, and I think it's totally appropriate. I think that house number two, which has a kind of broader roofed, larger proportion windows, has a little bit too much in common with the houses that are not considered Fieldston's best. And I think that the style is a very important component to Fieldston. I think that another thing that could be considered is in coming back to us with different kind of information to show the landscape. And maybe we see the naked renderings, but we should also see the landscaped renderings. I think that integrating plantings, both new trees and shrubs, while indicated on the plans, seeing that would help, I think, both us and residents get a sense of the relationship of the new houses to the site.
Other comments? Yes, Diana?
Yeah, I really concur with a lot of Michael's observations. I think they're right on the mark. For one thing, one thing that is particularly troubling with the two houses on the site is that that sort of rear yard appearance of the second house is kind of in the back. And also this sense of, yes, it's like a little, it's like a little development area with six houses or four houses or three houses, in this case, around a circle, which really is kind of a characteristic of this district and doesn't seem suitable at all. And maybe one house could work there much more suitably and with a different kind of entry as well, or maybe a shared entry of some sort. But the way it is now is really troubling. And I have a lot of concern about the sense of, that there is a real community resource here that's, you know, for the pond and the adjacent area that people use, that needs to be protected so you have a real sense that it's in a rustic context. And I am concerned about the amount of development, really, even though it's not right next to the pond, having an impact on it. So I concur in all that. I think that it's also, as Michael's saying, very critical to have the landscape integrated with the houses and to see how that works because that is an integral feature of this district and one of the things that really, you know, makes it work, obviously, in the way that it does. That other house that's on the corner, I was concerned about the issue of how does it work on the rock? And exactly what you were saying, that maybe if there's, maybe it needs to, we need to go, I need to, myself, I haven't seen that site, so. But the sense of maybe it could be much better integrated by taking a different approach than the one that was an attempt to keep it, you know, maybe very precise or blockish or whatever. It's not a bad style, but in this particular location, maybe something that's a different style would let it feel like it's more organic in development. And I think that's important.
Right, because it's almost like it's got a square footprint and then it's a square box. And I think, you know, there are other things that could make it look, you know, different heights or something and roofs. Okay. Other comments? I know that we've asked them to come back. Michael, anyone want to say anything?
I have a hard time feeling that somehow three houses on this plot is not a red herring. Let's show them three, they'll knock us down to two. And quite frankly, my general fit- It's just an opinion. Quite frankly, I could deal with two, with house number one pulled away from the outcropping, and perhaps some changes to house number three, which really, I don't know this area that well. I know it from hundreds of photographs that I've seen. The style of the house number three says to me that it wants to be on a rise surrounded by-
Lots of open spaces.
Fields, not shoved back into an outcropping.
All right. Other comments, yes, Fred?
Well, since you've come out of your little closet, I was going to say nothing more until I got there and make my thoughts known there. And I think that's really what I'm really feeling. But I have not dissimilar feelings from what Michael has just expressed. It seems to me like house one is an anomaly in that it's a back house, it's a back lot. And I just don't see many of those in this neighborhood, but I want to go and look. So I'm thinking somehow one and two, should those two houses, maybe one, not even sure of that. And I still have reservations about house three on top of the rock, but we'll just have to wait and see.
I will just say, too, that fine presentation, but it's the existing house and it's so nestled with such extraordinary regard for those rock outcroppings, I'm not even sure of one extra house, but let's see.
Other comments? All right. Any other comments? Okay, I just want to say that I think I feel similarly to the other commissioners. But I would also have to say that I think a threshold issue for me is whether this lot should be subdivided. So I think I asked you that, I think you talked about certain sites that have had that. I really would like to see that information and to understand it before I feel that it's appropriate to do it, given that there are other larger lots and it would have some implications on what happens to those lots. And if they came back to us for similar kinds of subdivisions. I think if that has been the pattern, I'm very open to it, but I feel I haven't got that information right now. So I think that would be very helpful. I think the other thing is that there's been very thoughtful testimony that's been provided to us, and I think it'd be very helpful for you to come back and respond to some of the issues that they've talked about because they've gone into detail about the historic nature, the reports, the development patterns. They've identified the lot patterns. And I think if you could provide research as well to that, and maybe you've done that, but tell us in the context of the comments that we've received, I think that would help the commission as well. Okay, are there any other comments? And in terms of the style, I would defer to my fellow commissioners on them, that I think what they've said makes a lot of sense. I think that the house that's at the corner, somehow it would be better if it was integrated into the topography, a little bit better than just sort of sitting as one box over there. And I think if, you know, by taking two homes and trying to combine into one, I actually think overall it will be a much better site plan. Yes.
So would the next step be what?
Okay, I think the next step would be, you could keep on trying to convince us that three homes would work, but I think there's an overriding feeling that perhaps a better site plan would be two. I think you should start, come back and explain the premise of the subdivision of the lot to begin with, because I think, I know Chris had some concerns about that as well. And I think that all these comments about looking at the site plan in the context of landscaping would help us as well. I think the corner side and how it should relate to the rock outcropping, so that's sort of an overall comment. And finally, I think the last point was how this relates to the pond. So maybe part of this is to come up with presentation material that we can understand more fully and see it in this context. I think right now it's just hard to sort of see it because the visuals are, you know, they're in snow and can't really tell the full extent of it. So part of its presentation material, but I think in general, it seems like you should really explore the two-home option.
And the-
Some is when does that lot meet now?
And when they come back.
I think we'd, I think it would be helpful for the commission to see it before they come back.
That's what I was wondering.
So I think we- So I think we can try and coordinate that. I know-
I hate to suggest this, but maybe without so much snow on it, too. I mean, it's a little bit hard to appreciate.
Very hard to see.
I mean, I know that's a time problem, maybe. Let's hope it's not. Let's hope it melts.
Probably.
Or sun or something. Yes. I think we can work with you in sort of coordinating when the commission can go, but probably, I don't know if you'll be able to do in February, but I would imagine sometime in March, and then find out time for you to get back to us. But I think you have also a lot of work ahead, so we can both use that time. Okay? All right, great. So with that, we can close the hearing.